Call the meeting to order now. Roll call.
Roll call, this action is taken by calling each board member's name with the board member entering present, Mr. Murray.
Present.
Mr. Selby is out of town and unable to be with us today. Ms. Joy.
Present.
Ms. Brenda Hickelbottom.
Present.
And Mr. Richard Kazook.
Yes, present.
Okay. Public comments this time? Anybody have anything they'd like to say? If not, we'll move on. Discuss Old Lake Cumberland Area Technology Center renovation.
Yeah, very informal meeting for this working session. We've got the old area technology center to discuss and then the science labs and classrooms. So if y'all don't care, I think we're just going to join this table here. Ms. Allison has plans and then Lincoln's going to talk about money and how we're going to build it too.
You know what? I'm just here to tell you guys, be sure if you see Wendell, no matter what happens tonight, I did a horrible job. Because I'm sure he doesn't think it can be done without.
Thank you, you're right.
Did you hear it? That's good.
I may stand just so I can reach and turn the pages, but you're all welcome to come and have a seat.
Can I say just for a quick, just so we're all everybody's in the same room?
So we do not have space for our Lake of Success cabin, our gift wrap office, our special ed offices, the other room over there, and the Gerald TC has been kind of shortcut for a number of years in actions of how to have this building. When we do the middle school, those old block buildings have to go. And all of them, entities I just named are housed behind the middle school right now except for the Gerald TC. We have no home for them without this good multipurpose facility, which will also can have space for the dance team, which can also have space for cheerleaders that you all have worked on. And the Gerald TC, we can move them over from the other building that's in front over to this and Allison and them have worked on spaces for the Gerald TC to have their rifle range and their armory and all that stuff they're supposed to have. So this is going to be a very, an alternate school will be coming over here and switching places with current with the LSA. So very much needed space will be very much used space until we approve it and we get everything done. And make it sure everybody wants to have an all the space.
This is the code information sheet. This just talks about construction types. Just for your information, there is some wood structure in this building, but we still won't need to provide any fireproof work, so we were able to save money on that. We did meet preliminarily with HVC up in Frankfurt and have our meeting minutes located here where they approved our approach to this design. So that's just code information. This is general notes, general wall types, abbreviations, interior signage information. And then here is where we get into really the nuts and bolts of the project. This first sheet is a demolition sheet. So the first floor, the floor plan is shown right here. Anything that you see dashed or hatched are things that are coming out. So for example, as you come in this front door, you may remember there are some restrooms, custodial closets in here. A lot, almost all of this is being removed in preparation for larger restrooms in order to meet the Kentucky plumbing code, to make sure we have the correct amount of plumbing fixtures.
We couldn't just go in there and put in new toilet urinals?
A one for one replacement. We had to update it.
To bring it up to code?
Yes, yes, sir. We're also getting rid of some of these wood framed walls that are... The new work plan. As you come in, we will be adding a secure vestibule here. So basically adding a new door and frame and wall here. This will remain locked at all times. This front door will receive a new AI phone, a remote button release controlled by the person sitting in this reception area. So this would become a secure vestibule right here. The reception area would have a sliding glass or a transfer, sorry, a transfer window that they could talk to and see who's over here in the vestibule. This door will also have a remote release. And then the health clinic will be located here. It will have its own restroom. And then there's two offices and forgive me, Mr. Ford, I don't want to call exactly.
That's one I failed to mention is the healthy kids clinic for middle school and high schools also located in those block buildings that we need to tear down for middle school.
Panel. We've even talked about potentially doing like maybe a darker color on the base and a lighter color on the top.
Is it this long? This long? It looks so long there.
Well, see, it's hidden by the front of the building.
Good other building, right here.
Yes, you only see about that much of it.
That's probably what you're thinking, Ms. Brenda.
And then this is the end that is most visible facing the middle school. All new windows, new metal wall panel, which clean up. And then the back is going to look really nice. Now we only have one overhead section door and then everything else is just doors.
This is the one that runs parallel to the cafeteria.
Yes, yes.
That's basically the cheerleaders' yard.
That's true.
That's all automotive.
Yep, it's all automotive.
You don't spend any time in there, have you?
I've been in there a time or two.
Think I've been there before.
They found your initials on the post.
You'd probably be it.
We are currently in the process of coordinating with Devin and CMTA on the mechanical units and I'll let him cover that here in a minute. But there will be some louvers that we're not showing yet, but I just wanted to make you aware, they'll be new, they'll be nice and clean, they will be located intentionally. So it will look nice. But there will be some new louvers on the elevation. I'll let him show that for you just in a minute. As we said before, this back portion will receive the new white vinyl liner up at the top. We will also paint all of the exposed steel so it don't just get, you know, get cleaned up, have a nice fresh look. Everything on the front portion of the building will receive new two by two laminated ceiling tiles.
Maintenance went in there so they, for the contractors, and they've already gutted all the ceiling tiles and tied up the wire so that folks wouldn't have to guess when contractors come and look.
Right.
And so they went in there, they volunteered, Scott volunteered them to do it, so we took advantage of it. So I appreciate them doing that. So it exposed everything.
And then I think Devin, you have updated any heat drawings, so I'll bring these to the front.
Architect always goes first because I'll put you asleep. So, yeah, so our job, we're just supporting everything Allison's doing with plumbing, electrical, mechanical. So like she said, it's pretty plumbing heavy focus because we're adding so many fixtures on. So we're demoing out all the existing plumbing fixtures, demoing the existing water entrance back to the main and then we'll be doing a new water, new sanitary, same thing with the gas. Right now, there's several boilers that serve unit heaters. A lot of this, like I said, was existing heat to begin with and then came back and docked some window units here and there against Macy. Getting rid of all that. And then the new plan plumbing wise, we've got, let me go to the large plan like we were talking about earlier, see a little bit better. Since that's where the majority of the work's happening. All new plumbing fixtures. What's really nice and will save some money is that the fixture itself for all the water closets, the district already has a bunch of these, I think on pallets, Scott said.
Next year, Lakeview Community Action had contacted us sometime last year and had a bunch of them. And so Scott went and took advantage of them, they're in storage.
Yeah. So I've confirmed with Scott that we're just going to provide some new flush valves and carriers, but the owner's going to provide that to the contractor and the contractor will install all the new cooler water closets. Yeah, that saves some money. The water entrance used to come up in a little closet right here, so we're having to extend that main under slab and bring that up in this little mechanical utility closet that Allison's given us. And that's where the water heater will be as well. Some details, risers for those coat people that Mr. Ford was talking about. Looking into mechanicals, that's a pretty interesting. Yeah, right. I'm immune nowadays. Again, demoing all the existing HVAC utilities in this building pretty much. So there's a lot of existing unit heaters along the walls, big unit heaters hung in those old shop spaces.
There's no central air conditioning.
Right, right. It's all just, there's some air handlers that are providing conditioning up on stands outside, old dust collector for the wood shop and then the boilers. But all that's going to get gutted and go away. We're even taking exhaust outlet and do exhaust for the restrooms. All that's all old welding gear, exhaust hoods, all that stuff's getting gutted, all the piping.
We've also reached out to insulated recent contractors and Brent has said that they're more than happy to come back down because Devin's going to, he's going to come up and have a couple of small units sitting on the roof. And so we want them to come back and reseal the curb and just for that.
Yeah, poke it holes in there.
Yep.
In their new roof. I know you all talked about reaching after them, so that's worked out fine.
Yes.
He's actually going to be in the district with me tomorrow.
Okay, great.
Is the big solar panels still there?
They're not, they're, they're actually, I think they're stacked up in the space.
Yeah, they are. They've never been relocated at the new building.
I was curious.
They've been taken down. Actually, they got them removed, Mr. Kazook, when they started doing the roof because I was afraid something would happen and break them.
That's a good question though. Do we want to salvage those in terms of that, not only the solar panels, but the inverters that serve those electrically?
I thought the inverters were already out too.
I think there's still some solar stuff that's in there in that room. I think.
Okay, I thought Mr. Farvem.
Oh, did he pull off?
I thought he did.
He might have.
Because I know at some point they want to relocate them at the new somewhere.
That's what I was wondering.
And we'll make sure.
Maybe on down the road by the softball complex and put a fence around them or something.
So this is the base bid plan. There's only one alternate HVAC wise, it's super simple. We're using these vertical unit ventilators, they're packaged unit for the class, but they're cost effective, as energy efficient as we can be at that cost point. But it's just a package unit, split DX heat pump with electric auxiliary heat if it's too cold outside. But it's just nice and compact, it's in the corner of the room and there's a louver that goes through the exterior wall like Allison was talking about. I can show you a better detail.
It meets the state's fresh air return.
Right, yes, so you get your ventilation, but then you don't have to put a boiler in, you don't have to put a chiller, cooling tower, all that central plant pipe stuff. This is all just packaged.
Pretty costly.
But for base bid, to save money, we're doing a ductless unit. So it's basically, it's a plenum on top, I've got to give you detail of that, so you see some better. So it just sits on top of the unit and blows air out into the space in two directions since we're putting this in the corner. But we have an alternate to duct those and actually distribute those out into the space. A duct then would come off, go into the ceiling and then go out to diffusers, so.
And the duct work was actually included in the construction cost currently on the BG one tonight.
That was just for all those conditioned spaces, 20,000 I think, off the top of my head.
Forty, I think. Forty.
Yeah, so the pros and cons of that really is just noise, they're a little louder if you don't do the duct work. So those are the package units, but we also have packaged air handlers that are sitting outside. We couldn't get a unit like that to go inside, small, you know, big enough for these bigger areas. So you've got an air handler sitting outside, but we're putting those up, we're still, this is in progress, but there'll be a structural stand that keeps those up off the ground just to keep them from being vandalized or anyone messing with them or trying to take copper out of them. Then we've got duct that just goes straight in. So this will all be double wall painted out, you know, nice duct like you'd see in a gymnasium or something like that.
Those are big spaces.
Yeah.
They're very big spaces.
How long is this going to take to do?
Everyone's looking at you.
Two weeks.
That's what you were telling me, yeah.
Mr. Murray said that'd be start to finish.
From right now, huh?
Oh, okay.
Ten months? I'll figure it here, that's good.
We're planning on coming back in August for the, with the construction document approval and then hopefully going out to bed second.
Yeah, we're thinking during this 23, 24 school year.
The rooftop unit, they were mentioning, that serves exhaust for these restrooms. So that sits right above.
I like everybody. Did you jump?
If this gives you a better idea of those louvers I was talking about, I'll give a better detail, but I wanted you to be able to visualize what these units look like. And I've got, here, I can show you this too, what it looks like. Yeah, it just looks like a big refrigerator sitting in the corner of the room. That's looking at it in sections. So there's your exterior wall, there's the unit, the supplier comes out and the return air comes to the bottom. And then you've got this sleeve through the wall with a septum in between that's doing exhaust and outside air.
Where's your filters located on that?
They are right in here. Yeah, vertical, horizontal around it. But then there's the wall of them. It's different size for each unit, but roughly, most of our units are going to be this 40 by 48. So it's a large, large chunk of louver, but like Allison said, we get the, where we're doing the new facade, we get to pick where it goes.
We're going to work on developing that, making sure it looks nice, architecturally.
How many of those?
How many? One per classroom. Each classroom gets its own. So it's its own thermostat, you get individual control. I think there's like six.
I think about the amount of filters it takes, no, that's up there.
Yeah, that's right. This is controls drawing, it's in progress. Here's our electrical drawings, just where a mechanical gets to play, play electrical. So demo, yeah, Constantine, Brad. Again, we're just demoing all the electrical that serves one that's on existing walls if we're getting demoed, right? All the lighting's going and then any of the power feeding, the existing equipment, I talked about, that gets stripped out, that gets all pulled out as well. Salvage the solar, because right now I think there's some solar components called out that we're saying demo, but we'll change that. This is demo rods. It's the lighting demo, so we'll put the floor, show you what we're going back with to, it'll look really nice. So those upper area levels, demoing all that wood out.
Yeah, all the platforms will be removed.
Yeah. So new power plant, we still need to get a, we've got Fort Knox camera layout right now. We need to get that layout from you still where we want to put it.
Okay, yeah.
That power just to support the spaces Allison was describing, power to support all near HVAC units, there's those units I was talking about, support two, three, four, five of them.
And we're just going to use a ductless for that office at the end, I think?
Yep, we got a mini split there and then mini splits in these smaller offices, so they still get individual control and they're not just getting whatever. Lighting wise, two by fours and the laying ceilings, all LED and then big high bay, kind of think like an gymnasium look, big open areas. And anywhere there's no ceiling, we've just got industrial strip lighting. This is going to be a big, huge storage space because there's full of boilers and equipment, electrical equipment is going to be along this wall, but there'll be a bunch of, a bunch of space right here for boiling.
Can't have too much.
That's true.
And additional school plan doesn't allow for.
One of, one of the things that's in progress, Allison mentioned the AI zone at the front door like we talked about with the release, we've got that, but we're still, I think, talking to door hardware about where we want card release because there's some talks about maybe even the cheerleader side doing. That's in progress. And this is panel schedules. No one cares about those except that. That's it.
Did we get a good timeline on the switchgear?
I mean, their switchgear's, you know, 40 to 50 weeks out, so we just have to get it rolling.
Yeah, just want you to place the order. But I think we do that at the back end. That's not going to slow down, that would stop the...
Yeah, I think we, Larry, Larry, we were talking about switching in at the end, after it arrives on site.
Really the big curve ball in this one was just the HVAC happened to...
The thermal envelope for the car.
It makes sense, I think. Plus coat people every now and then get something right.
Well, that's good.
Do you have any questions?
When I worked there, we dumped coal in here.
Yeah? We're, we are doing, there's gas, there's gas already in the building, so we're still going to use that for those big air handlers that should be outside, those all be gassy.
This is the science lab, so I was going to ask Mr. Ford, do we want to talk? Lincoln first or do we want to?
Lincoln may want to jump in.
Yeah, before we switch.
Let's roll our sleeves up just for a second, big ass. You know, skip over page one, we all know that you're outstanding.
One more?
Sorry about that. I want to focus on page two.
Page two.
And I kind of made myself some notes, there's only a couple of columns I want to talk about on page two. Well, I'll skip to the very last page and then work backwards. What I'm going to talk about tonight is how you could add a planning capacity of 29 million 500,000. This is just arbitrary, this is kind of a beginning point of discussion. There can be a lot of, a lot of massaging of numbers as we move forward, but just if, if I show you how you could get 29 million 500,000, less the BG one for this project would require in its current form, 3 million 215,000 would leave you with 26 million 285, 000.
So we're thinking Mount Middle School?
Yeah. So if we go to page two, I usually love to bring good news all the time, but your ADA would be, the good news here is that what I'm going to present to you is after we have taken into account the big hit in ADA, which the numbers that I have seen, if they're accurate, is a decrease from 2,819 down to 2,635. So a loss of about 184 students. You guys are familiar with your local nickel and the equalization and you're familiar with how the equalization, what its purpose is, is to fund your students equally to those districts like Campbell County that have a large tax base. And so each unit of average daily attendance that you lose, that's equivalent to roughly $500, I hate to say per student, but monetary value, but for each, for each unit of average daily attendance, that's $500 of flaws per year. And then that's per equalization. And here in Russell County, you've got three equalizations. So the decrease year to year of 184 students, that's roughly $1,500 per student if you take the sum of the three equalizations.
Per year?
Per year. So going down from 2,018 to ADA of 2,635, that's a loss of revenue of $275,000 per year.
A lot of rip off that, it impacts seek, it impacts, you know, all of those attendance of us.
So that's the worst news. So now how do we recoup some of that revenue? So historically, every two years, when the general assembly meets, they look at other districts, we've had skyrocketing property values like Campbell County, et cetera, and they say, well, we've got to readjust the equalization formula to keep the, play the budget. Yeah. This last budget cycle, when they readjusted, it was $50 per student increase coming back to me. As I'm here today, I don't have a crystal ball, I've got no, no sound basis for telling, for suggesting that the increase would be the same amount as it was last time. Historically, it's been $25 per student. And so what I've, what I have shown... Historically, it's been twenty-five dollars per student, and so what I've, what I have shown, um, in my projections is based only on us getting another increase of another twenty-five dollars per student. That said, though, all the dynamics are still in place for a very large increase again, and I say that because statewide, property values are still going up. Statewide, the total number of students in state enrolled is going down, so the per student threshold, in theory, there's a decent chance that it is another outsized increase in funding. So to get to twenty-nine and a half million today, I'll show you where our problem is. If you, if you jump to the far right-hand column, O, on page two, this would be your revenue source over the next twenty-five years. Yep. And, and, so, basically, we've gotta come up with some additional revenue in early, so, um, in column E, and I'm gonna talk to Mr. Ford at, uh, the NSBA, and he indicated, may not, may not have the ability, and we pretty much understand, may not have the ability to contribute a large amount of, of general fund. Column E shows that to get to twenty-nine and a half million, based on the currents of assumptions, which is only an increase of twenty-five dollars per student, it would take the general fund contribution of three hundred and fifty thousand dollars for these years listed in column E. Now let me soften that up. Specifically, let's look at fiscal year twenty-five. As I understand it, there's no chance that you would be issuing bonds until the fall of twenty-four for the Minnesota project. If that's the case, then you would only have one interest payment in fiscal year twenty-five, so it's, it's very possible that you would not have to contribute any general fund dollars in fiscal year twenty-five. It's also possible that we get, again, we, we, we do have reasonable ex, reasonable, we do have reason to hope for double the, I'm only, I'm only including an increase of twenty-five dollars per student of twenty, and that twenty-five dollars is per student of your two thousand six thirty-five, so if, if we get the same increase as we did the last budget, in other words, fifty dollars per student, that would be an additional hundred and ninety-seven thousand that I'm not projecting. I'm only projecting what, like, the thirty-year average increase of, of twenty-five dollars, so so now we've kinda, we've kinda circled fiscal year twenty-five, and we said, okay, fiscal year twenty-five may not be a problem. Fiscal year twenty-six, if we get the fifty-dollar increase instead of the twenty-five-dollar increase, then fiscal year twenty-six, you may only need to contribute a hundred and fifty thousand per general fund.
We just, we could get a reduction in that, and not hit the twenty-five.
That would be very, that, that's, that's on the real possibility, that's what we, yes.
It's possible.
It is possible, I can't say it's not possible. You're exactly right. Could not say it's not possible. So then, as we get out to fiscal year twenty-seven, once you get out to fiscal year twenty-seven, you have another, another budget cycle that occurs in January of twenty-six, which here would raise revenue again in fiscal year twenty-seven, so, so even though I'm showing three hundred and fifty thousand dollars in fiscal year twenty-seven, it's possible that that's closer to zero. Um, now, the caveats are, this, this is, this assumption is based on ADA staying relatively close to two thousand six thirty-five.
Which we have no expectation of anything that that would increase, say, we go back up.
Okay, so, yeah, that, and, and, well, so, okay, if, if it goes up, it's gonna go up with the same effect as when it went down, for every, for every student that goes up, that equalization is basically fifteen hundred dollars per unit of average daily attendance that it goes up. To your point, what if, there's nothing, there's nothing.
Even chances of it, right?
Right, there's.
But you can't rule out anything these days.
You can't rule out anything these days. Yep, and so, I have also, to soften things a little bit, I have, I have held back twenty percent of your capital outlay dollars in this scenario, which would allow for a little bit.
A little bit of cutback, yeah, would.
Of ADA, yeah. So, yeah, and I, I'd also point out, you know, when we, the athletic project came in, you know, that's, came and gone, and we issued bonds, and, and here we are again, we're still talking about the next project, next project, and, uh, you know, so, from, from my perspective.
We've done a lot.
You've, you've done a lot, and you've taken a huge blow from the decline in ADA. Hopefully, it's temporary. If it's not temporary, there's still a path to have more than twenty-five million available after the ATC project. Plenty of time for discussion between now and then on what your ADA is.
Yeah, 'cause some of this stuff, we'll know by the time we're ready at this point for the middle school.
Yep.
You know, with the legislature, we'll have their budget session in January. We're not selling bonds for that mid, middle school prior to that, so some of these things, we'll know, uh, better handle how our attendance is looking, you know, for this startup school year. So all those things will kind of move forward, but we have to think about this, you know, long-term for the middle school while we're doing this, and, and one can't really happen without the other, we have to do this to have space to do the middle school, but and I know, uh, Mr. Smith and them, their cost estimates was not just what we feel like, they did a lot of effort and time on your cost estimates for the middle, I mean, for the old ATC, so I felt really good, I was really happy with those numbers, uh, but, well, you know, they're not out the bid yet, but they spent a lot of time on talking to contractors, bringing them through, in addition to their estimating folks, uh, so we felt really good, even to the point on our district facility plan, five million was a gestimate on renovations of the ATC, and we're looking at doing this, you know, for three millions and change, so I was very pleased with that, it, you know, just across members that bids came in that well as well, that good as well.
Yeah, it, it would have a leveraged effect if you do get any comeback of.
Sure.
Of students. That was a good ending there. Hope, hopefully, there's still room for, like I said, once we see what the General Assembly does, that you can conservative interest trades.
You know, and we can't really, maybe Jonathan and Mr. Branskin can, we can't really predict what the cost of middle school would be right now. I mean, there's such wild cards, they're putting stuff out to bid, um.
It all depends on, I asked you this, the time of year goes out.
Yeah.
What other projects we're bidding at the time, I mean, there's a lot of factors to it, other than this, that cost of construction, so, we gotta look at all those factors when we're ready to put the middle school out, try to put it out, you know, the correct time, that get contractors interested, get those bids back, but as everybody knows, construction cost is not going down. You'll buy anything.
The, the good thing is, you know, we all wanna do middle school, obviously, we're all.
No, hey, that's, that's, we're down last year.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, there are, you know, confident stuff, yeah.
Someone's come down quite big.
It's stabilized, too.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But it's not gonna be where it was five years ago.
But right, but right now, everybody has got so much work that when they go to bid something, they bid high because they figure if they could, if they get it, you're gonna have to hire more personnel or something, unless, maybe when this goes out to bid.
I mean, this summer, there's been a lot of schools out to bid, a lot of projects out to bid, so, you know, later on, whenever we get to that point, this goes out, and as I said, we picked that right time, this thing goes out to bid.
Get some other people down.
Yep, get some of these other projects off.
Good thing about this one, a lot of it's interior work going in the web.
Yeah, yeah. As compared to, to cleaning.
Yeah.
It's all happening.
Yeah, this is a lot of, typical outside stuff, it's a calling. And you know what the middle school is, you know, it's, it's not falling down, the middle school, right now, so, you know, we just have to, if, if we're at a better shape and we can seriously look at that and move out, or if we do have to wait a little bit longer.
No, I didn't mean, nobody did, we maybe have another try.
Thank you, guys. I'm encouraged by.
We win the lottery tonight, we won't have to worry about.
That's right.
They told me that at the conference as well.
I've heard that a couple different.
That's a, yeah.
Thank you.
Nine hundred million, what in the world is that doing?
Build your own school.
That's true, that'll happen, yeah. Yeah, I don't know, the name on it, that will happen, come win the lottery.
All right, we're ready. I will shift gears a little bit, and we'll.
You'll hold me back a little?
Sure. Yeah, we can do that. We'll shift gears and talk, uh, science, science labs renovation. Um, there's two, a couple of agenda items for, uh, submittals on the agenda tonight, schematic design as well as construction documents. The reason for that is, we just don't know what tier KDE's gonna assign this, and that affects what submittals we need to get approved, so just to be safe, and cross all of our Ts and ball of our Is, I'm also gonna ask for schematic design approval, even though we are done with construction documents, just to get the paperwork and approvals through KDE that we need. So I'm just gonna review the construction documents with you, uh, this evening. Again, this is just a general information sheet, abbreviations, wall types. This is the demolition plan, um, so currently, as it stands, the four classrooms, chemistry, biology, uh, biology and physics, but the four here and the quad are in the base bid scope of work, and then the ninth grade science rooms, the two here will be an alternate, so you have some options when we receive bids, you know, hopefully, they come in like we expect, but if they don't, then you have, you have some options to decide.
And I'll, um, we did that because the, how things may go with American Rescue Plans of, you know, we, we paid for summer school, we've gotta finalize all those things, but now, the way it failed and with our capital outlay, even if we don't have enough American Rescue Plans to do a six altogether, we probably have enough capital outlay, we could come back and amend the BG one with your all's approval, and do all six it, uh, with that scope of that project, but we wanted to include this to have options, just in case, uh, we would still do the same, the four, and, and we'd have to put off the, the two. Having said that, these are the, these two are a little bit newer than those anyway, they're not original to the school.
Yeah, I'm gonna say those were.
Down freshman doc.
So this is the overall plan that's down, this is.
Yeah.
So as far as demolition goes for architectural, we're taking out, um, all of the existing casework, uh, the sinks also in the storage rooms, the teacher stations are coming out, um, we will also go ahead and take out the, the floor finish, because there will be some underslab plumbing that needs to take place, so just makes more sense just to, just to replace the.
Allison, by the time we have the pre-bid meeting, are you gonna need to know definitively whether or not we can turn which two classrooms or four at a time, because contractors are gonna wanna know.
Yes, yes, so.
They're working on that.
Okay, okay. Pending approval tonight, we're planning on sending this out for bid this week, pre-bid meeting August first, and then bid opening August.
But we're, you know, it's four classrooms to relocate within the school, so we're trying to find.
We gotta figure out phasing.
Trying to find four spots, so that contractors, obviously, it's gonna be cheaper if they can work on four at one time versus two. Yeah.
Coming back, you lead, and then coming back, yeah.
Ms. Carter thinks they, well, she's gonna, we're being creative on spaces. I told her I had help behind the, you probably did, upstairs, in the gym, in the bleachers, back there, you know, not ideal, but you gotta make a little allowances.
So, uh, pretty much typical standard layouts in all of the rooms. We did a little bit different layouts in these smaller rooms, just because we do have less square footage, but I'll, I'll, let's talk about the larger spaces first. Um, when we met with the science teachers, I know that, um, they had seen or heard through the grapevine that they really liked the science labs over in Taylor County High School, which was one of our projects, so I actually met them in Taylor County, we walked through those science labs, talked to the teachers there, talked about things they liked.
She's met several times to get the science teachers' inputs on this.
Yes, so some of the things they did like was they loved the perimeter casework, um, and they loved the sinks in the perimeter. They did not like the sinks in the islands, because they feel like students fiddle with it and it's distracting, um, 'cause these are their workspaces, their workspaces. So we've moved all the sinks to the perimeter, and because there will be some plumbing rework, uh, we're gonna provide new six-inch metal stud drywall, full perimeter of the room, it'll also help clean it up. So we've got enough spaces for twenty-eight students in each lab. Actually, thirty-two in the large, twenty-eight in the smaller. In the smaller stations, um, we've reoriented the room, I don't know if you recall or not, but currently, I think, the instructional wall is here, maybe, here on the long walls. Something they really liked when we went and saw the other spaces was that all of the instructional, um, teacher stations were on the short wall of the room, because that means they can monitor their students better than having a water, you know, when they're working out. So we felt it was worthwhile to go ahead and relocate, just these two rooms are the ones that are changing, moving those teacher stations to the short wall, they're also closer to the, the storage room and the chemical storage. Let's see, we also have new eyewash stations, new fume hoods in the two larger labs, new instructional wall, we'll reinstall your, your smart boards, I know those are relatively new and in good shape, so we'll reinstall those, new marker boards, tapboards, goggles, typical, uh, science lab equipment. Same thing goes for the ninth grade science. We had to get a little creative in the ninth grade rooms, similar to those smaller rooms, just because they're a little bit smaller, um, we're doing the same work, though, coming back with new drywall, uh, for all of the new plumbing work, uh, for all of the sinks and the perimeter, and then we're actually doing eight student stations that are separated by a sink, but removed kind of from these work areas, just to make sure we do have enough sinks for twenty-eight students. The teacher station will still have a sink, uh, we're leaving the existing fume hoods in these classrooms just in case, we can, if we wanna talk about that again, we can, um, just for future flexibility, replacing all of the casework in the, in the storage areas as well.
How long time was that?
Well, as Mr. Ford was saying, it, it depends a lot on how many classrooms we can get at a time. Um, I did speak with a casework supplier manufacturer, and he said they're looking at anywhere from fourteen to eighteen weeks leave time on the casework, once the order is placed. So probably at a minimum, we're looking at the full length of the school year with phased, phases.
Reminder, ARP funds has to be extended September thirtieth, twenty twenty-three, or twenty twenty-four. Yeah, sorry.
Oh, my gosh.
You're gonna have to hurry.
If that's on the, the sample, or the notice to bid, they note that it's, uh, using, uh, prevailing wage for the federal, you know, all that stuff noted as that, so it will, it has to happen, you know, quickly.
Again, just, this is just reword for, for us from an HUP standpoint, so plumbing, a lot of demo happening where we had these old sinks, um, and workstations, so demoing back just to where we have to, back to the mains, and then you'll see new drawings, just feeding, that, that's underslabs, so that's all the sanitary, this is overhead, these are the water lines, like Allison said, they've given us this furred-out wall to make replumbing this stuff a little easier, and so you don't have exposed piping.
And this is really in nursing school.
This is re, all original to the school.
Yeah, that's all original, yeah. New, new plumbing, new sanitary, back to the mains, acid waste, and then, uh, new water, that's dropping down on those walls to feed these sinks along the, along the wall. We, we minimize, we've played around with the orientation of where the sink is to minimize how much trenching we have to do, because you have these island sinks where plumbing goes down, there's chinks, and underslabs, and sinks, so we've got that to, a limit, it's limited a portion of the area, so we're not ripping up too much of the floor. From an HAC standpoint, it's very minimal, just demoing.
We almost ran into a code issue with that, didn't we?
Yes, that's the other side of the coin, where we got to talk to the local inspector. We thought we were gonna have to redo all of the exhaustance area, it was gonna result in several rooftop units or units above ceiling, it was just gonna get expensive and messy, and we just called the low, it's, it's always worth a phone call, we just called the local HAC inspector, and I talked him through what we were doing, and he was checked, checked us off the list, so we didn't have to do that. So we're just replacing some exhaust fans to feed these new, um, fume hoods. It's really pretty straightforward on HACs, because you already have water source heat pumps that are providing heating and cooling, so we're just modifying your ventilation. Electrical, same story as last time, we flip sheets, just demoing.
Before, sorry, do you wanna touch on the propane versus the natural gas?
Yeah, so, there's, you've probably. Yeah, so, there's, you've probably seen that propane tank that sits outside that, that wing between the tennis courts, so that feeds the gas, um, gas valves in the science labs. A lot of the science labs are going to natural gas, in your case, natural gas is, is way on the other side of the building, so for us to get natural gas to this area, we would have to do a whole lot of work in adjacent spaces and ceiling spaces to get natural gas over, it's just not cost-effective, and it would disturb a lot of the school, there's already propane there, we met with the science teachers, weighed the pros and cons, and they agreed it made sense just to stick it to the end, yeah. Good point, Allison, so, yeah, demoing receptacles, they're in the way for our new casework, and we'll be providing new receptacles, this is the uh, where do you go? New receptacles, provisions for the teaching wall where the TVs are gonna go, power, yeah, power for exhaust fans.
The quality, yeah, the four together.
Yeah, the.
We're gonna do a little bit of work in between, I don't know if you all know, but this area, they, they all join.
Yeah.
They can access this area all the way through here.
And really, the intention, we're making this better, too, there's gonna be a sink back here, and then there's a dishwasher.
I didn't realize how important that was to them, but they, they had that now in labs to wash their beakers and do all those things.
Yeah, so they got that now, so that'll be.
If they don't get anything else, we're gonna have to put a dishwasher.
That cannot be an alternative.
That cannot be an alternative, yeah, yeah.
And a dishwasher, for sure, yeah, this is the special one.
The science teachers that they're just great to work with.
And then two, with the propane, what's nice, the existing propane, there's already emergency shut-offs that are, that system was still annoyed now, so if something happens, right in the exit, hit the button, it shuts all the, we don't have to do anything new with that, those safety items. Overall plan, yeah, that's all I got.
Yep.
Well, that's quick.
Yeah. That one's a little bit easier than the ATC renovation.
Oh, yes.
Yes.
That, that she looked like it's all laid out, that's what's going on through the weather, wasn't right.
It really has. Yes, yeah.
Weird, making, uh, I'm gonna prove it, I want to say that.
I know, 'cause we're the.
Yeah.
It's crazy, because everybody's bills are.
What's that?
Derek down is good.
There it is.
Yes.
It was. What that woman told me, there was.
I think I heard that.
So, at, at the second meeting, so like I said, this is, this science is ARP funds and the capital outlay we need to, and at, at the regular board meeting, you all seen that list of the BG ones and BG twos and, and the schematic design documents and all that to, to formally approve, because this was just us to, to work through it and talk about it and have all the folks here.
You don't have anything else?
He's a running drawing, you don't know.
Tell me about it.
And you're Kevin Sutton.
Yeah.
And you telling it? I, I understand that you're being awful quiet about it. Maybe her, good mother, but. He takes me fun after.
We can? Is there a motion for a jury?
I'll make a motion with Jerry.
Is there a second?
I thank you.
Gerald's.
All in favor?